It is six o'clock and we will call the Kerrville City Council meeting to order. Thank you all for being here tonight, staff and council. And at this time, Councilmember Brenda Hughes is going to lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
You'll stand with me, please. Heavenly Father, bless us all as we gather here tonight. I ask for your guidance and wisdom as we deliberate tough issues and complex discussions. Remind us to be thoughtful, considerate, and understanding of the needs in this community, and give us strength to do what is fair to all. I ask that you continue to protect our community and all who put themselves in harm's way to make our lives better and our communities safer. And for all we are blessed with, let us always give you the glory and acknowledge your son, Jesus Christ. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brenda. And at this time, Stuart, you have some announcements for us.
Thank you, Mayor. We do. We have a few. We're gonna have a big weekend, but first, let's talk about tomorrow. We've got, this is always a fun event. This is actually Fire Safety, it says for Fire Prevention Week, but I think it's Fire Safety Month, too. So the Kerrville Fire Department will be at the library tomorrow at 10:00. They'll be talking about ways that we can work to prevent fires. And then after that, the kids will have a chance to explore the fire trucks. And they do that every year. It's a lot of fun. Makes for some great photos. So come on out and see us. 10:00 at the library. Probably don't need to mention this, or imagine most of y'all know about it, but we do have a big event here this weekend, and it's gonna be right out in front of the building here. And that's the 2022 Kerrville Chalk Festival, October 15th and 16th. I think that's Saturday. It's from 10:00 to 5:00, and then Sunday from 10:00 to 4:00. Encourage everyone. This is a great event, a lot of fun, tremendous art. I think we have six food trucks that are gonna be here. So a lot to do. I encourage everybody to come down and see it. Generally, those things stay around for, the drawings stay around for about a week, and then we wash them away. So come see them while they're here. And then Saturday and Sunday, if you don't, if you're not tired and you don't want to go home, we have the Haunted Ghoul Pool. And that will be at the Olympic Pool. There's a 5:00 family tour and a 7:00 scary tour. I'll definitely be doing the family tour. I don't like to be scared. But that was, I think we've done this for about three years now. It's a lot of fun. And again, I would encourage everybody to come out. That scary one does get scary, so.
It gets scary.
Yeah. So if you, if you don't want to get, do that, come out at 5:00. And we also want to remind everybody, on another Halloween-related note, that we are still looking for booth sponsors for the Family Fright Night, which will be October 31st. So if you're interested in setting up a car or tent booth for that, call the Parks and Recreation Department. They're still looking for people, and that's a lot of fun. It's a great event. Brings a lot of people to downtown as well, to the parks. So that's it. But I do believe we have some more announcements, and I don't know who's up next. We've got visitors' section for announcements, correct?
Yes, yes. So I think we've got, does the council, anybody have anything that they would like to say? Okay. If we could have the UGRA people come in. Come on over to the podium.
Good evening. I'm Diane McMahon. I'm the president of the Board of Directors at the Upper Guadalupe River Authority, better known as, and I hope affectionately, as UGRA. Mayor Eichner contacted UGRA staff and asked if we would like to introduce our new general manager, which I'm delighted to do tonight. So just a little background on Tara Bushno. She received a bachelor's degree in natural resources from Cornell University. Then she served in Paraguay with the Peace Corps, followed by research positions in Virginia before she came to UGRA 15 years ago. She has interfaced with city staff on a variety of topics during those 15 years in her prior position as natural resources manager. Those of you who already know her work ethic and her professionalism can be confident that our programs of mutual interest will continue. And that said, UGRA also hopes that there will be additional opportunities in the future to partner with the city. So I'd like to introduce Tara Bushno.
Thank you so much, Diane. That was very kind words. And thank you very much, Mayor and council, for the invitation to come tonight. Although I am new to this role, I'm not new to the Upper Guadalupe River Authority or to our community. And as Diane noted, over the last 15 years, I've had a lot of opportunities to work with your wonderful staff, and I'm grateful for that, and definitely look forward to continuing to partner and collaborate with your team to benefit our community. And you know, we at UGRA remain committed to being a resource to you and to your staff and to the public about the Guadalupe River and about water resource topics and concerns. So our door is always open, and thank you for welcoming me to this role. And happy to answer questions either, you know, now or anytime in the future. Feel free to contact us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Glad to have you on board.
Appreciate it.
Us, too.
Okay, at this time, Stuart, you didn't have anything else? You're good? Yeah, okay, okay. Let's, we will have a Kerrville Kindness Award presentation to the Kerrville Public Utility Board. And if you will have them come in, please. Come on in. Join me up front here. Before the team? Wonderful. All right. City of Kerrville recognizes the Kerrville Public Utility Board with the October 11, 2022 Kerrville Kindness Award. When a devastating Category 4 hurricane smashed through southern Florida last month, the Kerrville Public Utility Board immediately deployed seven of its line workers to answer the state's call for mutual aid assistance with anticipated power restoration efforts. K-PUBs, David Burley, is David here? This is David. Josh Whitworth, right there. Nathaniel Crabtree?
How's it going, everybody?
And Justin Martinez, he is not here tonight. Eric Hancock, he's not here. Zach, is it Gudn?
Gwen.
Gwen, Gwen. Zach's not here. And Trey Owen. All right, and we have.
Tammy Riley.
Tammy, your name's not on here.
Yes, I can go to Florida. I just sent them down.
You sent them to Florida. Smart woman, smart woman. All of you were instrumental in helping restore power to more than 26,000 customers in the New Smyrna Beach, Florida service area. This trip marks the ninth time K-PUB has provided mutual aid assistance for other communities. K-PUB crews have previously worked in Florida for the cities of New Smyrna Beach in 2019 and New Smyrna Beach, Lakeland, and Bartow in 2017, and in Kirbyville, Texas after Hurricane Rita in 2005, Ike in 2008, and Laura in 2020. K-PUB also provided Central Texas Electric Cooperative, CTEC, assistance with restoration efforts during Winter Storm Yuri in February of 2021. The Kerrville Kindness Program offers a sincere thank you to K-PUB for their unwavering commitment to serving others in crisis situations. We thank you very much. Thank you. Any stories, anything you want to share with us?
Keep it clean, guys.
You were down there for two weeks, three weeks?
Just shy.
Just shy of two weeks.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, all right.
All the days run together.
I'm sure they do. Was it worse than you'd expected?
It was a lot of water. It was a lot of water. Next time, she's gonna have to get me a life check.
Requirements, right? Okay, all right. Well, we do, we thank you. And it was just so wonderful of you to be willing to go and help, and we're proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, we need to circle up? All right. Sure? Thank you. Okay, all right. We'll give this to you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have a proclamation for the night skies. So if that group will come up, please. All right, good to have all of you. Thank you for being here. And here's some more. All right. Please join us. All right, City of Kerrville Proclamation. Whereas the aesthetic beauty and wonder of star-filled skies are the heritage of all humankind and locally to the inhabitants of Kerrville and are therefore worthy of celebration. And whereas the experience of standing beneath a star-filled night sky inspires feelings of wonder and awe and may encourage interest in science and nature, especially among young people. And whereas the opportunity to view star-filled skies attracts tourists to our region and therefore economic benefit to Kerrville. Preserving the rich historic heritage and starry night skies of Kerrville is important to its citizens. And whereas light pollution, which is wasted energy that performs no function or task, and artificial light that goes where it is not supposed to go, creates glare, light trespass, sky glow, and overlighting. Solving the problem of light pollution involves making better use of outdoor lighting to direct light down to where it is needed instead of upward into the sky, putting outdoor lights on timers, and using outdoor lighting only where necessary. And whereas the historical view of the night skies has been eroding in many nearby areas, and generations are growing up with limited, if any, view of the wonders of the universe. And whereas this regional effort and the preservation and celebration of our night skies is worthy of a month-long celebration. Now therefore, I, Judy Eichner, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim October 22nd as Hill Country Night Sky Month. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Kerrville to be affixed this 11th day of October, 2022. Would you guys introduce us and tell us what you do, how you're related to this?
Bill Rector, former president of the Kirk County Friends of the Night Sky.
Kathleen Brinkman, a member of the group of concerned citizens who want to protect the night sky.
I'm Bruce Barton. I belong to the Hill Country Astronomers as well as the Kirk County Friends of the Night Sky.
Kim Morvitz, Professor of Physics and Astronomy at Schreiner University. I run the observatory next to campus and obviously Kirk County Friends of the Night Sky because we want to use that observatory.
Greg Martin, I'm a resident of Kirk County and a member of this group and happy to be here to hear this proclamation so well stated by the mayor. Thank you.
Jennifer Robinson, this is my father. I am Kerrville County adjacent and here to support this wonderful movement.
Good, good, wonderful. Well, I grew up on a farm in Nebraska. We saw night skies all the time, and I loved it. So it is important, and our kids, our kids need to enjoy it, be able to see it. So thank you for all that you do. So you need, are you ready for pictures? Okay, very good. You are welcome, and I'll give that to you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, and we have another proclamation tonight. So Chief, are you coming in? Is anyone else with you?
I bring. Our bourbon travels.
Thought we had some guys in blue out there, so come on in, gentlemen.
Of course, we bring fire pup with us, too.
Oh, yay! There he is, all right.
One of the things we get to do and really excited about on this week is really make that impact to the children, our local kids here in our community. We're gonna be out in the community, probably about 3,000 kids from the local schools, the daycares. We provide education, information that we give them, and then we also provide demonstration. Fire pups out with us, which we always appreciate, bringing the trucks out for the tours. We just get an opportunity to kind of engage with them. So that is made possible by local donations to the fire pup program and our Fire Prevention Week for that. And so we get all this material come in, these guys come into the office. Mary Sugovia, Administrative Assistant, sets up the, sets up the line work, and everyone comes in. They stuff all the bags, they get everything for all the different ages out there, and we get out for the week and be able to do that. So it's exciting. And then we ask this time really for our community, so your kids are gonna come back with information. So they're gonna ask for that. Fire won't wait, make an escape plan for that, to not just take the word, but put some action behind it. So take a look at that, have that conversation at the dinner table for that, and it'd be great. So I appreciate everything for there, so.
Well, let's read this. City of Kerrville Proclamation. Whereas the City of Kerrville is committed to ensuring the safety of all those living in and visiting Kerrville, and home fires are a serious public safety concern. And whereas, according to the National Fire Protection Association, home fires killed 2,580 people in the U.S. in 2020, and fire departments responded to 356,500 home fires. It's a big number. Whereas, smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of a fire in which you have as little as two minutes to escape safety. And whereas residents who have planned and practices a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas residents must make sure their smoke and CO alarms meet the needs of all family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape", effectively serves to remind us it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Now therefore, I, Judy Eichner, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim October 2022 as National Fire Prevention Month, and urge citizens and visitors of Kerrville to, "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape" for Fire Prevention Month 2022. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Kerrville to be affixed this 11th day of October, 2022. We thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very, very much. I'm curious, Chief, if we ask the crowd, how many had a fire escape plan? What would be the percentage?
Well, I think they actually had the conversation. I think it's low. I'd probably say, let me give 30% of the room, a true plan where you talk to your kids about it.
Just ask. How many have a fire prevention plan? Oh goodness, we need to do some more educating, don't we? Yes, so, no, it is very, very, very important. So we thank you, guys. You put your lives on the line for us all the time, and we are very, very appreciative. So, well, first of all, before I shake your hands, tell us who you are and what you do if it's something different than as a regular firefighter.
Well, we're all firefighters and paramedics for the most part. We're just, some are rank structured differently, but I'm a lieutenant. My name is Casey Goodman, and I'm going on my 10th year with Kirk.
Good, wonderful.
My name's Jeff Nell. I'm a driver with the fire department.
Okay, how long have you been with the department?
21 years.
21 years, wonderful.
I'm Bill Randall. I'm a driver with the Kerrville Fire Department. I've been here 12 years.
12 years, wonderful.
Leslie, is there a battalion chief or bishop?
Been there a long time.
How many years?
37.
Wonderful, thank you.
Gerald Liddy, I'm a lieutenant. I'm also the deputy fire marshal. Been here 23 plus years.
That's wonderful. And?
Fire pup's been with us since the beginning, helping us out.
Very good, very good.
I won't reveal.
Jason Latif, fire marshal for the city. Been with the city 20 years.
20 years, wonderful, wonderful. I just, I really appreciate your time and your dedication and your longevity. That's wonderful, absolutely. Okay, you ready for pictures? You need them closer together?
Yeah. Move it.
All right, gotta cozy up, guys. All right, hold that. Turn around and shake the hand of a councilman behind you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shake your hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will give you this.
I'm on the end. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. We appreciate you. All right, good proclamations, good groups. Okay, we are ready for the Visitors and Citizens Forum? Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, we do. We've got a citation.
It's a chief?
There he is.
On the center. Right here?
Yes, sir.
So we had an opportunity, I guess at the last council meeting, we did the Kerrville Kindness for Joe Ramone demolition, allowing us an opportunity to really get into their building over at the middle school, the old Tybee High School, and provide some of the training over there. We said we did the fire, the EMS, and police, and some, but we really came together as a group as law enforcement and public safety, and did some of the active shooter training over there. And one of the reasons it was successful, and one of the things I definitely attribute to in talking with Chief McCall, is Lieutenant Monty Johnson. And what he was able to bring to the table and really allow us to really kind of bring it up in a more professional and high-quality training for what he does. So I'll read a few things for him. So Lieutenant Monty Johnson was raised in Kerrville, graduated from Tybee High School. He joined the Kerrville Fire Department in October of 1997 as a firefighter and promoted through the ranks to lieutenant. Recently accepted responsibility as a medical team leader for the SEU Tactical Paramedics and is a member of the KFD's Active Threat Task Force. He is an alert instructor and provided tactical training over the past decade with various agencies. In August of 2022, the old Hal Peterson Middle School became available for training at the generosity of Joe Ramone demolition and Lieutenant Johnson in coordination with the Kerrville Police Department, Kirk County SO, and the KFD leadership, where he will establish a training and education plan to deliver active shooter training and education to over 200 local law enforcement, fire, and EMS personnel. This training spans six days over two weeks to provide classroom education and multiple practical scenario trainings. His joint training is instrumental to provide the collaboration and coordination between all public safety agencies. His exemplary leadership and dedication to the safety of our community has earned Lieutenant Monty Johnson the Kerrville Fire Department Citation of Merit. And I'll read the Citation of Merit. He did not know this was coming. So Lieutenant Monty Johnson, Kerrville Fire Department Citation of Merit, presented to Lieutenant Monty Johnson for your exemplary leadership efforts to provide the active shooter education and training to the Kerrville Fire Department, Kerrville Police Department, Kirk County SO, and surrounding law enforcement agencies in August 2022. Present this 11th day of October, 2022, signed by the city manager and myself, so.
Let's get his family over here. I think they came in with him. Come on over and get some pictures. And if you'll introduce your family to us.
Thank you all know already, this is my girlfriend Carrie Bott. And this is the lovely Lola, Carrie's youngest daughter.
We have a total of eight between us, so if the whole family would have been here, we would have taken them.
Well, that's great. Thank you. Thank you. And we all need to shake your hands up here, so.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. You guys are doing good stuff. Thank you. Okay, now we are ready for the Visitors and Citizens Forum. And Shelley, if you'll read that in?
Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the Speaker Request Form and give it to the city secretary. The Speaker Request Form must be submitted to the city secretary before the item is called or read into record. City council may or may, may not discuss or take any action on the item, but may place the item on its future agenda. Each speaker is limited to four minutes, and we do have six citizen speakers signed up. Thomas Jeffers?
Before Thomas actually speaks, I would like to just remind everybody again that in all of our speakers tonight, we're going to respect them. No clapping, no booey, no, no, no nothing, bad English, but no nothing. So just remember that, and let's be very respectful of everybody. Thank you.
First time here, be easy on me. One thing about tonight with everything that's going on is it's people helping people. And that's what it's about, people helping people. I remember when I was young and they started discussing about taking prayer out of school. '62 it passed. I was in junction. It was '66 before they took prayer out of school. And I can remember my mother saying, "This is America. That's never gonna happen. This is America. That's never gonna happen." We look around at a lot of states today. A lot of abuse takes place, especially to children. And once again, we have people on the sidelines saying, "This is Kerrville. It's not gonna happen here." It's gonna happen here. Bad things happen to good people. If you believe in the power of good and evil, sin is rampant. It's very rampant. If we don't stand up for our children, and that's what this is about, standing up for our children, as the firefighters would stand up for us, come to our house and we're on fire, we're gonna want them to come get us. You wouldn't want me trying to get in there to get you. You'd want one of these boys that was up here a while ago. We need to stand for our children. I shared this morning, missionary's court, I have two great-grandsons adopted. They're five and six. I adopted them four years ago. I've got a one that's gonna turn two in January, a little girl, their half-brother, that CPS brought to me in March. For 30 days, we did not sleep because she was hooked on meth. 30 days. meth. Thirty days. My wife and I took turns. One Saturday, early wee hours, I decided to clock her sleeping, and the most I ever clocked her sleeping was 25 minutes. Hooked on meth. And then, unlike four years ago when we adopted the boys, the state of Texas laws have changed, and it appears that nobody cares. We have court, nobody cares. She'll be going back with her mother for a full weekend this coming weekend. Nothing's been said about the deposit test for meth on the mother and the baby. No charges has been filed. Back in August, if the judge would have gotten her way, hadn't have been too much restriction, she'd have put the baby back with the mother in August. We go to court again in November. The baby will probably be put with the mother in November. I don't understand. And I asked CPS, does CPS not stand for Child Protective Services? But it's not just for them, folks. All of us. I'm sure we all have kids. We all have grandkids, some great-grandkids. If we don't protect them, who will? He was talking about reaching 3,000 kids with the fire prevention. That's awesome. That is awesome. But who's going to protect them? Is the city? You know the old saying, "It takes a village to raise a child." Is the city going to protect them? Is the council going to make sure that nothing comes down the pike like it did at the library that harms our children? And I believe most people in here agree with me, we should not give a child pornography. If adult wants it, that's their business. But we don't give it to children. We don't put it where they have access. You know, when CPS come to my home, I got guns. You know what they did? They made sure there was locked up. They made sure the ammunition wasn't with them. They protected the kids. And that was four years ago. This time, they didn't do that. Oh, they asked me if they's locked up, and I told them, yeah. They didn't go look and see. They just took my word for it. Guys, let's not lose our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie Reeves.
Hello. Good evening. I am here to speak again to the parking lot issue on Clay Street. I'm here to ask what you have discussed or plan to discuss to protect other neighborhoods from what has happened on Clay Street regarding the parking lot. Your 2050 plan talks about wanting in-town neighborhoods. But if there is no protection from the tentacles of commercial encroachment, then you don't have in-town neighborhoods. They're all going to fail. They're all going to end up gone. So I don't know what the 2050 plan is then, if it's not just words, if nothing's done to protect these neighborhoods. I know there was a ruling in our situation, a court ruling, that meant this businessman gets his parking lot. I don't understand why he gets it really with no compromise. No fencing on the one side. We have to look at that parking lot. Everyone is still disturbed about it and talking about it quite a bit. It doesn't feel like there was really any compromise. Not really. I don't understand why the court ruling would negate all the requirements for permits and inspections. And I'm not sure if you knew that. Maybe you did. There is a requirement for a construction fence, and I had neighbors asking me about this. So I called Donna Boyer. She had someone named Steve Reyes from the city call me. He left a voicemail saying, "Because of the court ruling, he cannot require a permit, and he cannot enforce inspections." So I'm glad there's, you know, he's not building a high-rise or something. But I don't understand that. Just because he gets the parking lot, he doesn't have to do permits and inspections? I just don't really understand. I truly think at this point, if he wants to put a Ferris wheel in his parking lot, you're just going to feel like you have to let him. Where does it stop? And when is it going to affect other neighborhoods because of what has been allowed here? I get it that there was the court order, he gets his parking lot. But I don't understand why he gets it however he wants it. I know you were tired of the issue. That was evident. I know. I heard some of you say, "We're tired of it. We just want to get past it." I understand. We're tired of it. We're the ones that go home and live with it. You know, none of y'all live on Clay Street. None of y'all drive down Clay Street, probably. I don't know. This is not a bunch of fourth graders fighting in the parking, in the playground over a soccer ball. This affects quality of life, safety, traffic issues, and property value. So it's worth figuring out how you're going to protect other homes from this kind of thing, I would think. And I hope you will address it at some point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacqueline Hall.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name's Jacqueline Hall, 1800 Junction Highway. I wanted to speak to the issue of the content of the books in the library. I contacted the city last week to ask whether the sexual content had been removed from the children's section. I was told that a form has to be completed by citizens and then reviewed by staff, and there's a whole long process. I don't think it takes a form and a review process to determine that those obscene books are not okay for children. The sexual content must be moved out of the children's section immediately. As a conservative Christian that pays taxes in the city of Kerrville, I'm asking that all obscene and pornographic books be removed from the children's section permanently. I'm also asking that the library and its staff be prohibited from membership in the American Library Association. The ALA has proven itself to be a vehicle for Marxist indoctrination that tears down the foundation that our country was built on. There should also be consequences for the library staff because they willingly displayed these obscene material to children right in front of their section. There needs to be boundaries for content that is viewed by children at the library. This is our God-given responsibility to them as adults. And I hope y'all take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl Fitch.
I don't have my heels on tonight. Oh, here, this goes. Okay. We have read many reports in the newspaper of arrests for the possession of child pornog-- oh, I'm sorry, Cheryl Fitch, 403 Forest Ridge. We have read many reports in this newspaper of arrests for the possession of child pornography and sexual assaults of children. Sadly, the addictive power of pornography bears this kind of fruit. So the list of victims of pornography and the list of children being assaulted continues to grow in our community. If you look up effects of pornography or sexually explicit materials on the brain, they explain that the younger a child is who looks at these images on a regular basis, the more likely he or she will become addicted to the pornography. They also explain specific changes in the brain. There are documentaries that you can see. They actually show pictures of a child's brain who is being affected by pornography. It shows neurological and chemical changes going on. It also describes how it affects the child's development socially. There's a documentary where people are giving their testimony on how they were affected by pornography as a child and the trauma that they went through. A pamphlet distributed by the Texas Association Against Sexual Assault is titled, "Online Child Exploitation." The first risk they identify is exposure to inappropriate materials. It also states, "You should contact law enforcement if a child receives sexually explicit images from someone that knows your child is under the age of 17." Even though the library staff does not allow their computers to be used for pornography, we are still dealing with sexually explicit materials specifically for children, not online, but in books that they can hold in their hands. This is with the approval now of city staff and city council, except for one of the members. At the city council meeting last time, the librarian did not explain from her perspective how each sexually explicit image in question could be valuable to a child. Is my contention from the evidence, and there's a lot more that I don't have time to tell you about, that this is detrimental to the child's development. And I ask you all to reconsider the seriousness of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nikki Keynes.
Hi, Nikki Keynes. I live here in the city. I'm here to give some comments and some words of caution. A lot of other people have given you a lot of information for the last two meetings. They've spoken at Commissioner's Court as well. And like Cheryl Fitch was saying, you can open up the paper or any of the other papers in town and read every single week about someone who's been arrested for pornography or arrested for sexual abuse. You could probably read from, I don't, numerous academic papers, like Cheryl said, about the effect on the brain. And I want to say that as a victim who's living through it, it does not go away. And if you say, like the paper says, that you protect your children, all of our kids, then put this stuff out of their view. Because some kids will look at it, and they may be confused. They may be curious. Some may move on to be offenders themselves. Some may go through years of counseling. Some may commit suicide. I'm asking you, and words of caution, that Kerrville is not in a bubble of immunity. As the other gentleman said, it is going to happen here. It probably has. Call any Child Protective Service person, and they'll tell you so. When it was said in the paper that this is an example of a national issue that was needlessly localized, I and the majority of people who have spoken before you and the Commissioner's Court would argue, we are not needless. The issue is not needless. Our children are not needless. And it is not something that you should be ignoring. And I ask you to please reconsider what you have asked or required of the librarian. What is the harm of putting it out of the view of our kids? And if a parent wants their child, they want to introduce them to it or explain it to them, let the parent do it, but don't put it before a child. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Stricki.
Bruce Stricki, 615 Earl Garrett. Kerrville is, as I often say, one of the greatest places to live. In fact, it's my favorite place to live, and I've only lived here part of my life. I'm hoping to get all the rest of it in here. And it is that way because of all the things that we have going on here in town. We've got this Hock Festival coming up. We just saw what a giving, loving community that we have here, whether it's the firefighters or the folks who love the dark sky, which I actually really enjoy a lot myself. If y'all follow me on Instagram, plenty of star pictures. And the firemen who did the training that we obviously so need in our society today. This is a caring and loving community. And that is why people have come here from all over the country. I myself, you know, from Utah, we have folks from California and Florida. We have folks from all over Texas and I'm sure every state. We even have Arizona representatives moving to Kerrville, Texas. It's fabulous. And it's because of that love and that care and the joy that we all get here. And you all drive us toward that. You all pick folks like the city manager who puts together a staff. That's incredible. We're going to hear from Kim later on about how we take care of our employees here and what a great job she has done for, I don't know, probably 12 years or so more, might be longer. It's been quite a while. And that is the kind of community that we are, that we all come together, find a way for. There's a homeless person who's been hanging around downtown recently that is known, well-known in this town by many people. And I can tell you that I cannot count on one hand all the people that have mentioned to me his name and his history and have talked to him. And I know he's going through some struggles, and I know that there are many people that are trying to work on that. And that's because of the kind of community that we are. This is a great place to live, and you all are leading us. And I love it. And I just want to thank you for all that you do. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
And that's the end of the citizen speakers.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can.
Well, what?
A factual statement.
Let's not. Okay.
Well, I'm permitted by law to just give a factual statement. It's not deliberative.
No, it's not a question.
Right. It's not.
If I give you permission, I need to give Kim permission.
Oh, that's fine.
Do you have a question?
I was just going to ask. I guess I don't really understand some of the comments that are being made because at the last council meeting, the explanation was given about the books. So I guess, Kim, would you be willing to just let the public know are the books from banned books week out in the children's section, available to children? And is there a plan to mitigate any future issues or EAF?
Issues out there, because there were some factual misstatements that were made during the visitor's section. One, the display was not in the children's section. It was in the middle of the library. It was about 20 feet from the children's section. It's at the table. These are all facts that we addressed last week. So I'm not restating anything that you didn't hear then. This was at the display table. That was the display table that is for all displays, which we do a number of throughout the year and has previously been the location of banned book week. The list of the banned books were produced. Those are most commonly banned books across the country, right? And so it's not, these weren't selected or specifically curated by staff. These are commonly, and they were ones that were from decades past. They were not specific books that were selected out of the children's section nor displayed in the children's section. In fact, many of them were actually within a cage component of the actual display that was put together by library staff. Does that help answer some of the questions?
Yes, and then also at the end of the last meeting for the future, I just want to make sure that the public understands that there was a mitigation effort that is being done to be thoughtful about respecting freedom, but also protecting children.
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah. So one of the ideas that was promulgated by library staff next year, again, these books weren't open necessarily out for the public. These were books with covers on them, right, that were a whole host of different categories and age groups. One of the ideas that was promulgated by library staff was simply to put pictures of the covers of those books or a listing of those books out on the display table in banned book week. And again, at the end of banned book week, those books did go back to the shelves in the various sections where they are throughout the course of the year and where patrons of all age groups and all types are able to access those materials per library policies.
Thank you. Rowan, did you have something you needed to say?
Yes, ma'am. Just to clarify for everybody, we can't deliberate this whole thing, but our council procedure rules and the Open Meetings Act does describe what we can do when a member of the public addresses something that's not on our agenda. And just so you're aware, we can do one of three things. We can provide factual information. We can recite existing policy. Or we can deliberate and take action only to the extent to place an item on our upcoming agenda, meeting agenda. And so with that said, at our last meeting, citizens had to wait until almost the very end of our meeting to speak, and yet the topic was not placed on our agenda for council to take any action. Today, they have come and again request council to take action. They shouldn't have to wait until the very end of our agenda for us to respond or any longer. They deserve a response from their elected representative now, and frankly, they deserve a response from us yesterday. So with that said, I move to place an item on our very next regular meeting agenda for discussion of possible action, and that the agenda item is titled, "The But Holds Worth More Libraries Participation in Banned Books Week, comma, the Libraries' Policies, comma, the Libraries' Association with the American Library Association, comma, and Personnel Matters Regarding the Conduct of the Library Director, the City Manager, and the Assistant City Managers Regarding the aforementioned matters."
Is there a second counsel to his motion? I'm sorry.
That's fine. It's on the record. Thank you.
All right. Let us move on to the consent agenda. And I would like to pull, recommend that we pull 4A. I know that it was requested to be put on the agenda, but we have received additional information that is absolutely not.
information that is absolutely not what we can go over tonight, it needs to have more time. So I'm going to pull that, suggest 4A be pulled and tabled for right now, for tonight. Are there any other items that you would like to have pulled, counsel?
I request to pull 4F, and I also respectfully, according to our procedure rules, object to the removal of the item and would request that if we're going to do that, we at least bring the item up for discussion, and if we want to table it at that time, that's the proper procedure to table it.
Do we have a motion to?
I move that we table item 4A.
Second.
Well, mayor, I'm saying we're supposed to have.
I call for the vote, mayor.
We're supposed to have deliberation on the item, and then, that's what our procedure rules say. We bring up the item, we deliberate it, and then we can take any, up any public comments or motions.
I call for the, for my motion, second, for the vote.
Well, then I raise a point of order that we are violating. Section, Rule 4.5 of our council procedural rules.
We have a motion, correct?
Yes.
Do we, and we have a second to the motion?
Right.
To pull it and table it? Yes.
And there's a point of order on the floor, too.
The point of order is on the floor. At this point, let's, is there any deliberation on this item? All right, there is no deliberation, it dies for, or, no, I'm sorry, we need to vote.
No, 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 no.
Now, our city attorney, can we have our city attorney address what we need to do with a point of orders on the, on the floor?
I think you all have had deliberation and then you've just declined to have any more, and you have a motion and a second on the floor.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Mayor, I made a point of order. Rule 7.2 requires the presiding officer to rule whether that point of order is well taken or whether it's, you're going to decline.
That point of order is declined.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's vote again to make sure that we have the right votes. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Thank you, it fails.
It passes.
It fails.
It passes.
I'm sorry, it passes.
I'll take it, it fails.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, all opposed, and we did that. All right, thank you. All right, items, 4B, 4C, 4D, 4E, do we have a motion? 4B, 4B, 4C, am I not on the right ones?
No, you're right.
Okay, 4C, 4D, and 4E, 4F has been pulled.
And 4G.
And 4G, okay, I'm sorry, that's right.
Okay.
Okay, all right, we're on the same page, right?
I'll make a motion, mayor, that we approve items 4B, C, D, and E on the consent agendas presented.
And G.
And what? Oh, G as well, okay.
Yes, okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Oh, we have a second, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of us. We have a second with Brenda. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, 4F.
Thank you, this is just, oh, the minutes of our September 27, 2022 regular meeting. On your, near your seat is a copy of an email that the city secretary kindly printed out and provided for each of you. I just have one request for an amendment, that's on page four to strike, and this is a motion that I made, to strike the word "and" and replace it with the word "by." This is whenever I suggested the language for the resolution for the STR Committee, by sending a notice to the city manager and city secretary. So that's an amendment I have there. I also have just a request regarding future city council meeting minutes. In the, you can read, I'm just going to read what I put here. In the future, I'd appreciate that the minutes include a statement when council members make comments, statements, provide clarification or ask questions. The reason for that is currently the minutes indicate when staff does so. For example, it says staff, whatever staff member, their name, provided clarification responding to questions, or such and such staff member provided information. And I believe it's just as important for the minutes to indicate when members of the governmental body provide clarifications, respond to questions, ask questions, they make comments or statements. So that's a request that I would ask, I'm not asking for it to be what, I guess, Commissioner's Court does, and that's verbatim, every single word, or like we used to do before, but if any of us make a statement, that sentence of such, such, such council member made this statement, and, because we do that with staff right now, I just think it's, it's important, equally as important for governmental body members to have that in the minutes, too.
And that is just a request that you are making, that's not a motion. Well, and I'd like, I'd like to.
I entertain deliberation with that, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to say that minutes are a synopsis or a summary of a meeting, okay? They are meant to guide you to certain topics of interest. The recording that we do is sorted by agenda items, making it easy enough to watch. And you actually are able to view inflection, body language, et cetera, and there's less room for misinterpretation. I don't think we need to put every comment that a council member makes reflected in the minutes. It's just a tool to, to get you where you need to go when you're looking for information.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Councilwoman, would you then agree that we shouldn't be putting staff's comments and information and clarification in there as well? Because that's what I'm trying to get at, staff's in there, but council isn't. And we're the governmental body conducting the meeting, that's why I think it's just as equally as important. But if it's not important at all, if that's what a majority of council believes, then I believe that we should completely remove that from the minutes, any indication of staff as well in there. Does that make sense?
Are they doing word for word from staff, or are they doing, or are they just saying staff commented?
Just that, and that's exactly what I'm requesting be done for council, too. The exact same. Not verbatim, nothing like that.
Well, I would think that when we have any issue, every single council member has an opportunity to comment or ask questions, but when we have a presentation, it's usually directed by one staff member, and that I would see as being a difference.
Well, I can give you just one example, just so, I think y'all may understand what I'm saying here. So, for example, when we discussed, if you look at the minutes, item 5B, there was a discussion about the PDD and stuff. We had citizen speakers come up and it indicates that, and that it indicates that one of our staff members provided clarification responding to questions. But it doesn't indicate council discussed anything or that any council member even said anything. So if we wanted to say, you know, councilor so and so made, you know, a statement, so and so made a statement, or council discussed a thing, I think the minutes should reflect that. Otherwise, maybe the minutes just don't even say staff member made clarification or anything. Does that make sense? Do you see what I'm saying there, though?
I'm a little worried about kind of overreaching as a council member. I want to kind of have the overview and I don't want to dictate exactly word for word what, what staff can and can't write, but that's my, that's my feeling.
Joe, any ideas, any thoughts?
The form and style of the minutes as presented have been adequate for me, and I don't see any reason to change.
And I feel the same way.
Okay, well, I appreciate the discussion. With that, I'll just, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with Amendment 1 presented.
All right, do we have a second for that amendment change?
Second.
Joe, seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is approved. Thank you. All right, let us move on to 5A. If you'll read that in, Shelley, please.
Resolution number 49-2022, a resolution granting a conditional use permit for short-term rental unit on the property consisting of an approximate 1.373 acres out of the Martinez survey, number 124, abstract number 247, more commonly known as 2101 Arcadia Loop South. Said property is located within a medium-density residential zoning district R2 and making said permits subject to conditions and restrictions. We don't have any citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew?
Good evening, mayor and council, this is a conditional use permit for a short-term rental. This was heard by the planning commission on September 1st. This is a four-bedroom house, and the applicant's shown that they have ample parking, up to nine parking spaces and then some. And there is the map showing the current and proposed short-term rentals on Arcadia Loop. Again, planning commission reviewed this with a, and approved it with a vote of 4-2, and the applicant's representative is here if you have any questions.
Just to clarify, the subject property is highlighted in the yellow.
Yes, sorry, I know that, that yellow is hard to see on the screen.
Just a little bit, right. Thank you.
Located right here.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Drew before we listen to the applicant? Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Tim Buck. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm here on behalf of Justin Farrell, the property owner. Mr. Farrell is in an oil field in Kazakhstan, can't be here tonight, so I'm here to answer any questions you might have. If not, we just urge that the resolution be passed and approved as submitted.
All right, thank you.
But that's such a short commute, why couldn't?
I'm sure he'd rather be here, though.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, any other questions, counsel? Drew, it was approved on the 4-2 vote, can you tell me what some of the opposition was?
Not off the top of my head. There was some discussion of the number of units that are approved on Arcadia Loop. Some of these are both conditional use permits and some are grandfathered. Obviously, these properties front the river or back up to the river, so they have ample recreation areas.
Okay, thank you. Okay, counsel, any other comments, questions?
As we move forward with the rest of these CUPs for tonight, focusing on this one, at least for an example, can staff explain what the impact of our new ordinance, did that go into effect yesterday or today?
Sunday.
Sunday, okay. Can staff explain the effect of that new ordinance on these new CUPs and what legal, I guess, method do we have? Are we supposed to still be approving these, not, you know, just what's your legal overview on that?
Yes, the council did approve the amendment to the zoning code that was effective on Sunday, that would allow short-term rentals by right in R1A, R3, RT, Downtown Arts and Culture District, and mixed use. The R2 district in this case would no longer be permitted. However, this application did come in before that ordinance was effective, so it's processed and reviewed under the previous code, in which case R1 and R2 was allowed to come before a conditional use permit before P&amp;Z and council. So we are looking at these under the old code as a conditional use permit, as a conditional use in R1 and R2.
So it's a legal standard that we have to comply with. It's the fact that they applied and submitted their application before the ordinance was revised and that, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Clarkson, I just heard you struggling over there. And it's, it's that, and it's not the fact that, I mean, they're not, we didn't adopt it, we didn't approve a CUP, and so they're not grandfathering anything, so we don't go with that, it's just the fact that they applied.
They applied for the CUP. If the resolution is approved, they'll be issued the conditional use permit, they'll be treated as non-conforming, plus the conditions within the conditional use permit.
Okay, do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve resolution.
Public comment?
Yeah.
It's a public hearing, is there anyone else?
You'll need to open it.
Go ahead and open it. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. 704, we need to open the public hearing. Is there anyone?
So, George Broody, 1616 Glen Rose, I almost did it again. So, I'm not really going to wait for the answer, but it'd be nice to see where he's, what you're referencing that makes that a rule about it's the application, not if that's a policy or a law, I'm just curious about it. The other thing is in the actual packet, it says, and I was confused by it, it says meets all zoning regulations, which I guess it really doesn't. The other Ms. Hughes referenced, and it'd be nice, whenever there's a kind of a mixed vote at P&amp;Z, that the packet might pass along the information to them as well as the public, what those concerns were, so that they can, council could actually refer to them as if they, you know, if they care about those or not. The last thing is, the, well, this is an example of one where if we just thought outside the box a little bit, and I know the neighborhood watchers are going to disagree with this, but this street has been, I mean, it's a short street, and it's already been infiltrated by a number of them. One suggestion rather than a CUP that complicates things might have been to find a zoning that would allow by right whatever is already there, plus short-term rentals, because, I mean, the whole midsection, if you drive down there, that feels like the entire street, even though it's not. So, you know, as you get to some of these, the, P&amp;Z addressed it with, what do they call it, Las Casitas at River Hill, I don't know, you know more about it, I think. Instead of trying to keep fitting that square pegged around hole, somebody might think outside the box a little bit and consider a zoning change for an area that was predetermined to be a certain thing, and get past some of the conflict in this issue. Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? At this time, at 7:06, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? I make the motion to approve resolution number 539-2022. Do we have a second?
Second.
Joe, thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes. Thank you. All right, 5B, Shelley.
Excuse me, resolution number 60-2022, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of part of Block 11 Lowry Edition, more commonly known as 305 Guadalupe. Said property is located within a medium-density residential zoning district R2 and making said permits subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew?
Thank you, mayor, this is 309 Guadalupe Street, this is zone R2, so similar to the last one. This would not be allowed moving forward for this conditional use permit request. However, obviously, the application came in prior to that ordinance being effective. Applicant shows room for six parking spaces, it is a four-bedroom home requiring five parking, five off-street parking spaces. And here's a map, and again, see if I can get that. The property is located right about here. Planning and Zoning Commission approved this with a 5-1 vote on September 1st.
All right, any other questions for Drew before we?
I know I didn't intend to, but I think you pointed to the wrong.
Yeah, it's the one that has that kind of triangle shape, I think.
Yeah, it's more like the exacto blade than it is the.
There you go.
No, over. To the right.
There.
Right there.
We're all on the same page.
I can't see it either.
You need to change that color.
Okay, so we all are on the same one?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say, I agree with the previous citizen's suggestion of the explanation of the negative votes, that way we get some information there. And I guess what he stated, too, is kind of what I was trying to get at, do we have something that we can refer to of any rural policy, whatever, or something on our, on our code that shows that when they apply is when we consider them under, applicable under that code?
That's state law, I mean, they, so if this went to P&amp;Z in early September, they applied in August. And so that you, whenever you apply for a permit, regardless of what it is, whether it's zoning or a building permit, you, you or we impose the rules that are in place at the time, this ordinance wasn't affected until Sunday, so.
Okay, so and that's state law? Do we know where? Just so I know as a council member, if anybody asks me, I'm like, here's what I'm relying on.
Yeah, if you'll email me tomorrow, I'll send you the state law.
Okay, thank you.
I have a, I have, I just, a comment, I don't disagree that it would be nice to know where, where planning and zoning split decisions come from, however, when I watch the planning and zoning meetings, there are many, many times votes that are split with zero comment from the commissioners. And I can watch the meeting back and come to this meeting and not have any clarity on the reason the decision was split, so I just be careful because we might be asking staff to interpret something that they don't have absolute answers definitively to, and, and I think that's a slippery slope. I don't disagree that it would be good to have that information, I just don't think that, that it is as easy as what it sounds, sounds like it might be.
By and large, we obviously try not to assume what the intentions of the votes were. Similar to council, they're documented in minute, action minutes. The video, P&amp;Z has recorded, so we can go back and watch those. The backup that you're presented with, again, by and large, is the agenda bill that was presented to P&amp;Z.
Yeah, and like that, we have a 3-3 vote that we're going to be looking at later. And if you go back and look at the, at the actual video, the ones that voted against it, there's zero commentary on it. So I have no idea why that decision was made the way it was. I would like to know.
Right, all right. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would the applicant like to say a word?
My name is Larry Howard. I live at 503 Oakland Hills Lane. I have filed the required paperwork to get a conditional use permit for 309 Guadalupe Street. I'll answer any questions that you have.
All right, counsel?
Anybody have one?
All right, thank you. And at 7:11, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak? All right, at 7:11, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion, counsel?
Move we adopt resolution number 60-2022.
Second?
Second.
Brenda, thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is approved. Thank you very much. Shelley, 5C.
Resolution number 61-2022. A resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of Lot 6 of Block 1 Riverside Edition, and more commonly known as 337 Guadalupe. Said property is located within a medium-density residential zoning district R2 and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Drew?
Thank you. 337 Guadalupe is two-bedroom home. Applicant has shown that they've got six off-street parking spaces on this one as well. And let's see if I can get the right spot this time.
That's previously noted.
Planning and Zoning Commission approved this with unanimous vote.
All right, any questions for Drew, counsel? All right, is the applicant here?
Yes.
And would the applicant like to say something?
Larry Howard, 503 Oakland Hills. I have no further comments.
All right, thank you. At 7:12, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? At 7:12, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Move that we approve resolution number 61-2022.
A second?
Second.
Brenda, thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is approved. All right, Shelley, 5C. I, 5D? 5D, yes.
Resolution number 62-2022. A resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of Lot 5 Colonial Manor Section 2 Edition, and more commonly known as 1425 Lois. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R1 and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Drew?
1425 Lois Street, as Ms. McLaughlin said, is R1. Here's the zoom out of the survey of the property. It is a three-bedroom house, and they do have room for four off-street parking as required. And on September 1st, Planning and Zoning Commission approved it with unanimous vote. This one is right here.
There it is, okay.
Does it come with a view of a water tank?
It does.
As a matter of fact.
All right, any questions for Drew, counsel? Is the applicant here?
Yes, he is.
Would you like to say a few words?
Matt Slitten, 324 Clay Street, Kerrville, Texas, here on behalf of the property owner. He also has a local family in town, as well as, as well as local management secured. There's just really one specifically adjoining house on the other side of the house that adjoins to a, to a city-owned property. And should not impact any, any neighborhood traffic at all with the, with it being on Lois Street.
All right, any questions for the applicant?
I have one question. I looked at the property, and I'm trying to figure out where are the four parking spaces? Where did those fit in? It was just...
Two in the garage, two in the driveway.
Okay, there are two in the garage, two in the driveway. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, at 7:15, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? At 7:15, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion, counsel?
I move that we approve resolution number 62-2022.
Do we have a second from Joe? All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is approved. Thank you very much. And 5E, Shelley.
Resolution number 63-2022. A resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of Lot 27 of Block 33, Shriners Edition, more commonly known as 130 Loop 13. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R1 and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. We do have one citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
All right, thank you.
This is 130 Loop 13, and it's zoned R1. They do have four off-street parking as required for the three-bedroom home. And on September 1st, Planning and Zoning Commission approved it with a 4-2 vote. And there is, um, property is right here. There's an existing short-term rental next door, and then one off of Francisco Lemos within the immediate area.
Okay.
It also backs up to the river.
Backs up to the river, doesn't it? Yes. All right, any questions, counsel, for Drew? Is the applicant here? All right, would you like to say a few words?
I'm probably the only speaker, too.
Oh, okay.
Well, no, I guess I just need to know if you have any questions for me. We have the allotted amount of spots, and we figured out how to make our, I'm sorry, our carport a little bit bigger lengthwise. So we will actually have five spots. We were going to request only three cars, because that street is pretty narrow, and we have four bedrooms. So we think most people can do with three cars when they're coming to our location. That's our biggest, you have two letters from neighbors, and that's their biggest problem is parking for the street. So I think we've addressed that issue by doing that. We have a garage, a carport, and, and then two spaces in front of the garage and the carport, and then we've extended the carport. So I'm hoping you approve that, but can I answer any questions for you? We did send an updated picture. It doesn't look like that horrible house anymore since the P&amp;Z went through. We've probably put $20,000 into it. It's all been upgraded, all painted, all the power's upgraded, all the plumbing is upgraded. We have gone through and put talking fire alarms and carbon monoxide dictators, motion, you know, what do you call them?
Sensors.
Sensors throughout it, you know, trying to make everybody as safe as possible. It'll alert my phone, our neighbors to have all our information. I think we tried to cover everything we could to make everybody as safe as we could. We've put sensors around the yard for noise. So if the noise hit, even though Kerrville does not have that noise, we're going to try to nip that in the bud. So if it does become loud, we can, you know, call and, and make that motion, because that is a very small neighborhood. It's, I don't, I only know of one child in the neighborhood, so people are used to it being quiet, and we want to keep it that way. My husband and I have done it mid-century modern. We are hoping to have older, you know, 30 and up in our home. So we call it a relaxation destination, not a, a party destination.
Gotcha.
So, but I'll answer any questions you have.
Well, thank you for that information, ma'am. You said you had four bedrooms?
Yes.
There?
I'm, yes. No, I'm sorry, three.
Three bedrooms. Okay, that's where I got confused.
Four parking spots is what's required.
Right.
We had three bedrooms.
Okay, but you did add another one for five parking spots, essentially, right? Okay, that's all. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for the applicant, counsel?
Wonder how those noise, noise detectors are going to feel during the fireworks.
We will probably change the sensing on those.
Yeah, that'd be a good place to watch those fireworks.
It is a beautiful place, and the music, because the VFW is kind of right across the way from it. So, in fact, I'm probably not going to rent it out that time. I'm probably going to enjoy that.
Do you live in Kerrville?
We just bought land in Ingram, and we're building there.
Okay, so you will be managing it yourself and will be closed. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And at 7:20, we will open the public hearing, and I believe that was our one speaker. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, at 7:21, we will close the public hearing, and do we have a motion, counsel?
I move we adopt resolution number 63-2022.
Second.
And we have a second from Kim. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is approved. Thank you very much. And the very last, I believe it's, nope, two more, right? So 5F, Shelley.
Resolution number 64-2022. A resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of Lot 4A of Block 1, Fair Oaks Edition, and more commonly known as 1602 Quinlan Creek. Said property is located within a medium-density residential zoning district R2 and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew?
Thank you, Mayor. This is 1602 Quinlan Creek. This is R2. This is a, actually a one-bedroom guest house. So it only requires two parking spaces. However, they've indicated they've got room for five. Would not, excuse me. Planning and Zoning Commission approved it with a 4-2 vote and included a condition that it be limited to the guest house only. However, the resolution you have before you does not include that. It includes the standard conditions that we've had.
Say that again? Yeah, say that again, please.
We presented the resolution as requested by the applicant, so it does not include that, that condition. Counsel wants to consider that condition in addition to those recommended conditions.
What was the additional condition, one more time?
That it be limited to the guest house only. So you can see, it's the main house and the guest house. The guest house is attached here, has a separate driveway. This is the main house with a detached garage and a second driveway, or primary driveway.
Quinlan Creek Drive is near Tybee Mountain, is that where that is?
That's correct. Just off Cypress Creek.
All right, any other questions for Drew, counsel? Is the applicant here?
I didn't see him. I don't believe so.
Okay. At 7:23, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Can I just ask a question? George Rudy, 1616 Glen Road. So why did staff not recommend it with the P&amp;Z's recommendation, if you will? I'm just kind of curious. Thank you.
That wasn't part of the staff's initial assessment of the property. The property owner requested a short-term rental at the property. We didn't limit it to one or the other. So, just consistency with the application. The resolution was drafted only as a conditional use permit for the entire property. Through discussion, P&amp;Z offered that additional recommendation.
Okay.
And to, and to add on to that, I agree, so usually when things go to P&amp;Z, whether it's an ordinance or a resolution, when they make, in their meetings, vote on changes, those are really recommendations that come to council. And I think it's pretty much all the time that when those documents actually get to council, we only see the original document that was presented to P&amp;Z, and then staff presents us, and you let us know, relay that P&amp;Z's recommendations and the amendments that they want to make, right?
That's correct.
That's usually how the process works.
Okay, at 7:24, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Pardon?
That was closing, but...
Oh, oh, it's not closing instead of opening, okay. At 7:25, we will close the public hearing. All right, counsel, do we have a motion, and do we have an addition to...
I'd like to make the motion to approve resolution number 64-2022 with the amendment that the short-term rental be limited to the guest house.
All right, do we have a second? It fails?
It's okay.
The resolution, or the motion fails for a lack of second. Do we have any other motions?
Move we adopt resolution number 64-20, I'm sorry, 64-2022.
I have a second.
And we have a second?
We did have discussion. I'm just curious, what, what's the hesitation or anything about not limiting it to the guest house?
Why didn't you second it?
Well, and I was about to, that's why I was really curious why there was not.
I made the motion that way because P&amp;Z did all the work, and their recommendation with the amendment passed by 4-2 vote, so I, I'm just basically going on trust that they have their reasons.
Right, no, I'm with you on that, and I was about to second your motion there at the end, and then I real, and then so I was really curious to have discussion, what, if there's hesitation from other councilmembers, why we don't limit it to the guest house.
Does anyone have a comment they wish to make, other than Brenda's?
The property owner requests the entire property. Honestly, I admire the work of the P&amp;Z. I admire the dedication they have. But if you look at our history on CUPs for SDRs, we haven't bought a lot of what they've said. Because we are interpreting the rules somewhat differently than they are. I think to be consistent on this particular case, we should adopt the resolution as it was presented by the property owner. Again, I respect the P&amp;Z. I respect the work they do. But on this issue, I think the council has consistently said, if you apply, you follow the rules, and you meet the requirements, we're going to grant you conditional use permit. And that's why I thought we would do it that way.
Gotcha.
Joe?
Was the property owner there at that meeting?
Yes.
Did they not say that they were only going to limit it to the guest house? And that's why P&amp;Z moved forward with that recommendation?
They've currently, they've been using the guest house as a short-term rental. But if I recall, they said they would in the future, like the option to use the whole entire house. But they have not used the house
Right.
at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I believe we have a motion and a second on the floor, am I correct? All right, and that second does not include any amendments to it. So all in favor, raise your right hand, and it is closed. Raise your right hand. All right, passes 4-1.
How's it feel, Brenda?
Okay, 5G, Shelley.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution number 65-2022. A resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of Lot 10 of Block A, Motley Hills Edition, more commonly known as 1701 Deer Trail. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R1 and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. This is an appeal by the applicant to the city council. We do have one citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
All right, Drew?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, 1701 Deer Trail. This property is zoned R1. They do have, currently have two parking spaces. They do have room to add two additional parking spaces if approved. And the planning commotion, or, excuse me, the planning commission failed to approve with a 3-3 vote. And there's our map.
Find the yellow box.
Nothing around it.
There we go. Everybody please to answer any questions before after the public hearing.
Okay, counsel, any questions? Counsel, any questions for Drew? Is the applicant here? All right, would you like to speak to us?
My name is Nikki Parks. This is called the Pickle Pepper Cottage that, um, we purchased down here to, uh, become an STR. It is a three-bedroom, two-bath, well, three-bedroom, three-bath home, but one of the bedrooms we made into an office, so we only offer two-bedroom, two-bath, and we only accept up to four guests in our home, and we do have room to add another parking or two spaces. But because we're only offering one to four guests maximum, we'd only probably add one more parking space to the house. I did give you all the paperwork that I had submitted for our appeal to be approved to, uh, continue being S, S, STR, short-term rental.
The Sweet Sage Cottage was from you?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So tell me again, and I, I apologize, tell me again on your parking. You probably won't go to four parking spaces?
Well, we can, but, I mean, we can do that, but we only op, we only offer for one to four guests, and we really only have two bedrooms available, and we don't put any sleeping couches in or air mattresses in to our homes. We limit the number of guests that we'd like to have in our homes. We don't want large parties and large groups of people in our homes. We buy small homes, and if they're too big, then we do something. We'll lock a room up and make it an owner's space, or like this one, we have a sitting room, and then we made an office because we get a lot of professional travelers in our homes.
And do you live close?
We own and live in Fredericksburg, and we are building a home out in Camp Verde. And that's one of the reasons we decided, well, we looked at Kerrville when we first moved here, we couldn't find anything. So we found something in Fredericksburg, and now we have land and we're gonna build.
And so you will be managing it yourself?
Yes, yes, we manage all of our properties.
Did we know why, did we have any remarks on why it was a three-three?
No, ma'am.
Okay. There wasn't anything, okay. All right. All right, any questions for the applicant, counsel?
Just to confirm, you said you have three bedrooms, you, you converted one into an office space, is that why you're only having, you only have two available now?
Right, we don't, like I said, we, we've had larger homes, and we lock an o, a bedroom down. This one, we need to have an office. We furnish it as an office. We have desk in there, and, um, I don't think we have a printer in that one. But we do, because we get the, uh, traveling professionals who need to have office space, then, and then a lot of times need to have the privacy, so with, that's what we do with our homes.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to confirm that with the parking requirement, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. If, uh, at this time, at seven thirty-three, we will open the public hearing. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? At seven thirty-three, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion, counsel?
I move we adopt resolution number sixty-five dash twenty-two.
Second?
Second.
Kim, all in favor, raise your right hand. And it passes. Thank you. All right. Now, we will have, if I'm correct, we will have another round of STRs at the end of the month.
You'll have two, I believe, on your October twenty-fifth agenda, uh, and then you'll have, uh, grouping in November
In November.
based off of last Thursday's, uh, P and Z meeting, October sixth, P and Z.
Okay, and then that should?
Uh, you may have one additional group in December, uh, based off of, uh, any pending deadline elements from November of P and Z meeting.
Okay.
Cause that deadline for, uh, uh, processing, due process of applications under the old rules uh, was this Sunday when the new, uh, regulations went into effect.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are ready for six A.
Resolution number sixty-six dash twenty-two. Resolution authorizing and approving the creation of the Kerrville Public Facility Corporation pursuant to chapter three oh three of the Texas Local Government Code to act on behalf of the city of Kerrville, Texas. Approving the certificate of formation and bylaws related thereto and resolving other matters in connection therewith. And we do have three citizen speakers signed up.
Right.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Members of the council, thank y'all so much for taking the time tonight. I appreciate it. Tonight, uh, first item I have for y'all is a discussion about the formation, possible formation of the Kerrville, uh, Public Facility Corporation. So, we have discussed this a few different times, um, but I think what I'd like to do is just kinda give a general overview as to what it is and why, uh, we're bringing this forth to you. So, the, the first, really kinda the big reason, uh, and being new to Kerrville, this is the one that I hear the most, this is the part of Kerrville twenty fifty. So we have an entire chapter in Kerrville twenty fifty dedicated to housing and all the various types, uh, that we desire and want in town, and, um, and one of the, several of the action items directly relate to, uh, finding potential funding sources and mechanisms to allow for development of workforce housing. Currently have a workforce housing project underway for single-family homes in the Ridgeland Project where EIC donated the land. And that's one mechanism.
City donated the land.
City donated that land, sorry, not EIC. I'm gonna get it right. Uh, the second part of that is after the formation of Kerrville twenty fifty, uh, housing study was initiated, uh, where we identified the need for up to three thousand homes, three thousand doors essentially. Many different forms, whether those are s, single-family homes, duplexes, multifamily, all different varieties. And for, for a whole host of, of, of different income levels, whether it's retirees, uh, or, uh, folks who are looking for that attainable housing, that workforce housing section of it. And so, one of the specifics areas in the strategic plan of that housing study speaks to, um, supporting additional attainable housing through two programs, one which is a federal, uh, federal program, and the second, which is a more localized state program, uh, where the city is the sponsor of a public facilities corporation. Okay, so that's kinda the why. This was discussed all during the comprehensive plan. Subsequently, one of the strategic goals inside the housing plan was the creation, the formation of this, of a public facilities corporation. Why create a PFC? So, one of the conversations that we have a lot is, hey, we need housing, hey, I gotta find a place for my nurses, hey, I need a place for my teachers, hey, I need a place for these people. How and where can we find that? Uh, so as you all know, it's a challenging time. But this has been an issue since Kerrville twenty fifty. This is not a new issue. And so, while construction is underway on some projects, some projects are moving forward, a lot of those projects are gonna fail to meet sort of that attainable housing goal, right? They're gonna, they're gonna have a hard time meeting the thresholds for the salaries that teachers make, that janitors make, that nursing staff make. And so, there's some incentives that need to kinda help push that along, right? So in the same vein that, uh, the city donated some land for single-family housing, there are some mechanisms that can be put in place to assist with multifamily housing, and one of those is public facility corporation. So, I wanna, uh, highlight someone you all know already, which is Ms. Summer Gray House. She's from, uh, Bracewell Attorney's Office. She came and gave a presentation not too dissimilar from this, not, not long ago. Uh, just so for, for everybody's sake who's in the audience, just to kinda go over what this is. So the city would create a public facility corporation, and that is chapter three oh three of the Texas Local Government Code. Uh, it's, it's designed specifically for owning and financing public facilities. The PFC essentially becomes a, is a, is a nonprofit acting on behalf of the city. The city, city council are the sponsors of the public facility corporation. Now, this can be the board comprised of the city council, or whomever you choose. A lot of times, cities our size, what we see is that the city council is the board of the public facility corporation. Larger cities, they'll have a separate board, but they'll also have thousands upon thousands of these, um, housing units, the rental units. Why are we doing it? I think what you see is, um, I mean, the purpose of the facility itself really is to bridge that gap to work towards that attainable housing for multifamily. So, you'll, this, this is a way that we can, we can get to those folks who are earning eighty percent or less of the area median, median family income, and, and find those folks a nice class A apartment that they can live in, right? So, um, there is no investment by the public facility corporation. So, there's no, there's no dollar value that public facility corporation or the city has to put forward. There is a statutory and full-blown tax exemption on this property, right? So that's the big kinda, whoa, that's a big, that's a big question mark in this process, right? So that property is a tax-exempt property. If this goes forward, wherever there is a public facility corporation apartment complex or housing development, those are tax-exempt, so long as they meet the requirements of having fifty percent of those units available to folks meeting eighty percent of that income or less, okay? So that means city's taxes, school district taxes, uh, county's taxes, everybody who's on a taxing entity, okay? One of the, one of the questions that was brought up to me earlier was, well, so, if we have a vacant piece of land that's currently valued at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, what is the, what is the tax implication for the city on that? So at fifty-one cents, ours is five hundred dollars, more or less, for our implication on that. So, accomplishing the goal of, you know, reducing that three thousand doors to three, two thousand seven hundred doors, right? And losing out on five hundred dollars worth of valuation of that vacant land, and having that property go to a tax-exempt status is essentially what you'd be missing out on a taxing standpoint, right, as a city. The school district has a larger share in that, so they would, they would, they would lose a little bit more, which would essentially be up to, let's say, a thousand dollars, right, depending on their tax rates. However, in discussions with the members of the business community, the need for the housing far outweighs one parcel or two parcels worth of tax valuation being off the rolls. So we have some folks from the chamber here tonight, uh, to kinda help discuss that when, when we open this up to the public. But I just kinda wanted to open that part of the discussion up. If you have a vacant piece of property, what is the value of that vacant piece of property versus what is the value to the community of having, uh, hundreds of doors available for folks who are gonna be tur, nurses, doctors, well, maybe not doctors, but, well, if I was a doctor, I would still do that. Teachers, et cetera. So, sorry, I'm gonna ramble here a little bit. If Summer was up to you, she would do and already did a much better job. So, in, in this scenario, there's kind of the city side, the public facility corporation side, and the developer side. So, the developer has kind of a lot of responsibilities once we en, decide to enter into a negotiation with somebody, right? So the same way we're gonna discuss other special districts, right, we need to have a public facility corporation in place before we could ever entertain the idea of actually having a developer come to us, right? So the developers, go ahead.
Sorry, can I ask a question right now?
Yeah.
It, when you say we have to have this public facility corporation before, is that before we even consider MUDs, PIDs?
No.
Okay, not those special districts?
Separate, but in the same, so, if, 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 yeah, no, separate, totally separate. So, two different tools in the toolbox of, you know, financing and or, uh, you know, economic development.
Can you clarify what you meant then, when, we need to have this in place first?
So, the public facility corporation needs to exist in order to partner with a developer and then go through the process of creating a, essentially a nonprofit, apartment complex is probably gonna be the primary use for this, right? So, you, you have, all these steps have to go through, right? So we have a resolution, and we'll discuss that towards the end, but a resolution, um, formation that's, that is, uh, submitted to the Secretary of State's office that actually formally creates the public facility corporation, then you set your bylaws, right?
So tonight, it's not project-specific to answer your question specifically?
No, yeah, sorry.
This is really about the overall, overarching, uh, umbrella, articles of incorporation, kinda the backbone of how that, uh, essentially that nonprofit entity is set up.
Right.
Did that answer your question?
So.
I was.
Yeah.
I was just trying to clarify, cause when I heard that statement, it sounded like we have to create this PFC before we can consider PIDs and MUDs. When you said other special districts, which I thought wasn't the case, so I just wanted to make that clarification that's, that's completely separate.
Totally separate, right.
So, so if we have, if we have a consideration of a PID, we do it at the time that the request comes, but we need to form a public facilities corporation before we can entertain any requests for this kind of future development.
That is correct.
So there's a different mechanism.
So that, I think that's.
Totally different mechanism, yeah, sorry, that was my bad, yeah.
So we do need a public facility corporation?
Not for a PID, not for.
Not for a PID, so it's totally separate, so.
Not to interrupt, th, these are just separate chapters in state law.
State law, yeah.
And you just follow along with the chapter.
For me, at least.
Okay, so what I was, what I was saying was, we have to have a public facility corporation in place before a project can come before us. That's different than how we look at a MUD, a MUD specific comes from a developer and asks us to create that kind of, that kind of at the time, right?
Right, right, if we decide to use that.
That was, I, am I, is that, is that more sense?
It makes more sense, yeah.
Sorry, I know I've got the next one coming up that's PIDs and MUDs, totally entirely separate things.
Didn't mean to confuse all that.
And is that correct, am I correct in what, what I said?
Totally different state laws.
Right, they're different, but the creation of this has to happen before a project can come before a body to consider.
Yeah, there's no specific project details on your agenda tonight.
Joe, you got a question?
Joe. Sir.
So we create one public facility corporation, and we can have many projects under that one. We don't have to create a different corporation each time a project comes up.
You do not have to.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so what do we have before us, right? So this is resolution sixty-six dash twenty-two, and that would create the public facility corporation. Uh, it would have, it's got within it the, um, the certification of formation, which is filed with the Secretary of State, as we discussed earlier, and then the bylaws within that. So with that, I'll turn it back over to y'all and answer any other questions you have.
Anybody?
No.
When you, when you say that the facility corporation becomes a nonprofit entity, one of my questions is, what are the reporting requirements, the rent restrictions, and all those other regulations that ensure transparency and accountability?
Okay, uh, I'm probably gonna ask Summer to come help us, but essentially, in order for this to, to, uh, to remain a nonprofit, to be a nonprofit, um, uh, project, fifty percent of those apartments would have to sell, or would have to rent for either eighty percent or less, depending on how deals are configured, but fifty percent of all of the apartments in, or houses, townhomes, however that, however that is, is done, have to be rented out for eighty percent of that AMI. And so, there are annual audits, there's meetings of the board to discuss that, the payments are made to the entity once a year at the end of the year, um, and, uh,
statutory requirements, but there's also, that's the minimum, right? So there will be deal-specific elements that are developed by development agreement and approved ultimately by, uh, you know, the PFC and the city council. Those could be more stringent than the minimums.
Every specific project will have its own development agreement?
Yes.
Transparency standpoint, those will come before the public at public meetings, and have the same approval mechanisms as you have for all your other development agreements.
And I just wanted to add, um, each development will have what's called a regulatory agreement. That is an agreement that is between the development entity that's gonna be leasing the, the project and the improvements from the PFC, which will be the owner, in order for the statutory tax exemption to be applicable. That regulatory agreement will be recorded in the Kerr County records, and that will require auditing. Um, and we can, obviously, there are specific concerns that whoever the PFC board is, has, we can make sure that those requirements are in place, but that is typically what PFCs around the state do, is that they will require. what PFCs around the state do is that they will require yearly audits to make sure that they are in compliance with that fifty percent, eighty percent minimum requirement, or whatever the other requirement may be that's put in place by the PFC.
So for any project that comes before a PFC, the minimum requirement says that at least fifty percent of the units must be rented for someone that is at eighty percent or below of AMI.
I will make one small clarification. The statute says less than eighty percent.
Less than, okay, so.
It's not eighty percent or less.
So we've talked a lot about this as council, but for, for the public, the AMI area median income is calculated based on what our area makes. And how are the rents determined? How do you determine a monthly charge for someone based on their income level? So that they're not cost burdened?
Right, absolutely, so, so we would recommend following HUD requirements. So HUD every year calculates the area median income and they recommend about thirty percent
Thirty percent.
of a, of a person's income as being affordable or attainable. And so we would recommend following the HUD guidelines.
Okay, so you start with what our area makes as a, as, as a, as a household, an average household income. Um, so in the area, someone has to make below eighty percent to qualify. And then you look at what they would actually make per month and you say they can't put more than a third of their paycheck towards their rent and that's how the rents are determined, not, if, if that's the, if, if we use the HUD standards.
That is basically the HUD standard, correct.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Okay, um.
Wait, what is this?
Can you start over?
We're gonna throw balloons at you, Joe. All right, uh, thank you both, I think we have some speakers.
Brad Barnett.
Good evening, council and mayor, Brad Barnett, uh, president and CEO of the Kerrville Area Chamber of Commerce, seventeen-hundred, uh, City Baker, Suite one hundred. Uh, just want to applaud, uh, you guys for moving, potentially moving forward with this project. I know we have worked closely with the city and developers, really doing what I think the chamber does best and being that convener of, uh, large groups. Um, I think this will be a great additional tool in our toolbox as we continue to build, uh, an, an even better Kerrville. So we're really excited and, again, we've looked at a lot of different things over the past year and I know you guys even longer than that, so, uh, just applaud you. It, it's so important for our member businesses to be able to have that attainable housing, uh, for their employees. And I know we've even had some issues with businesses that are already in our community that wanted to expand and weren't able to do so because we didn't have that attainable housing. Uh, so I think this is a great first step and, uh, just wanna thank you guys and whatever we can do at the chamber, uh, to support this and get the information out, we're happy to help.
Thank you.
Other question?
Yes, sir.
Did your, does your board endorse this? Has your board taken a vote to endorse this?
Uh, we just got the information yesterday and I've spoken with my board chair and my governmental, uh, affairs, uh, chair. They've looked at this and they're in agreement with me that this is consistent with.
Look forward to a vote from your board endorsing this?
Uh, we absolutely can, our next board meeting will be in about two weeks, so I can definitely put that on there, so, uh, to, to support this, if that's what you all would like.
Any other questions for Brad? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
George Burdi.
Uh, George Burdi, sixteen sixteen Glen Road. So, um, to clarify one thing that was said earlier about no cost to the city, it's not exactly right, and when you're comparing vacant land to the actual project complete, you can't really just discount it as being vacant land, it's, this is not like property tax that we wouldn't have unless these were built. This is, this is actually an unfunded mandate is what it ends up being, uh, by removing the property tax from it. But, but anyways, the first question you gotta ask is, um, you know, this is all about trying to get affordable housing. First question is, what is affordable housing? It's, it's not about the, uh, rent price, it's not about the income, it's the ratio of the two, right? As she spoke about. If you're even gonna consider something based on housing like that, you should actually codify in your bylaws that ratio that you're targeting, rather than just go project by project. Cuz if you don't, what you end up getting, it's hard to explain it in four minutes, but you end up getting the lower, the smaller sized, um, units, being the ones that are being made affordable to that family household income cuz it's not normally slid, uh, adjusted for the family size. The other, the other thing is, um, the, the unfunded mandate aspect of it. What this is talking about doing, I think the chamber would probably support something that's addressing housing. This is not the answer to the housing situation. The reason is because if you have a three-hundred unit apartment complex that is tax exempt, it's not just the city, it's the county and the school district. Presumably, there's a number of students in there that are, you know, I don't know what the number would be, but they're gonna be going to the Kerrville schools and there's gonna be no local funding to that from the property tax. You're essentially bringing on expense, cuz these are all, the theory is we're bringing in people to work, fill ge- these jobs. So these are new people with new housing, which carry new expense. And it's somewhat proportional to your budget. So you're bringing on a lot of expense without any revenue coming from that property. And, yeah, they're gonna fill jobs, but that's, those jobs are already here, we're bringing new expense and it's not comparable. It's actually a net, negative, uh, situation to the budget. Um, I would recommend, um, cuz I'm gonna run out of time, I would recommend you give a shot to reading something the UT, um, law school put out, I wrote it down, um, discussing this, it doesn't really say yay or nay, it talks about what you should add to it if you're gonna even try this. I would argue you shouldn't do anything that's increasing your tax base, but not really. This is not the way, PIDs are, are decent cuz the, the property is paying for itself. This is not paying for itself at all, the, the services will have to be paid for by somebody, it'll be the rest of the taxpayers. So the overall expense still rises. But that, that thing is, UT Entrepreneur and Community Development Clinic, they put out something called PFC in the section the, of the law, um, tax break for apartment development. In twenty-twenty, they analyzed some of the ones in San Antonio that were gonna probably model this after and the pitfalls to it. Um, and their recommendation isn't even really to do them, but I would argue, um, just strongly urge you not to create this in its current form as it's presented to you until you've looked at some, um, better safeguards to make sure something's happening. And have you asked, um, I mean, the chamber's great, but does the, it's my understanding the school board doesn't know and that the, um, uh, county commissioners don't know. Have they been told that you're considering an organization that essentially is given the authority to exempt taxes from their entities? Anyways, thanks.
Corey Edmondson.
Corey Edmondson, president and CEO at Peterson Health and, uh, address there is five fifty-one Hill Country Drive. Uh, I just come on behalf of, of Peterson, not necessarily of my board, going back to, uh, Mr. Herring's comment. They will know about that this month, uh, in regards to this, but I will tell you from my perspective, I support anything that the council will do to be creative and re- and add another resource, uh, to their tools to be able to, uh, provide attainable or affordable housing for individuals from a employer standpoint. Uh, Peterson is here to provide that exceptional compassionate patient-centered care and we're growing. And we're limited to growth based on being able to recruit and re-, uh, employees. And not only nurses, but our EVS staff, food service staff, who can't afford the one thousand, twelve hundred dollar a month, uh, rent. Can they afford the eight hundred, seven hundred fifty dollar a month rent? Yes, uh, when we have people, uh, from San Antonio that will drive here or from Bernie that will drive here to work at Peterson. Uh, and then, uh, a food service employee says, I can't continue to, to do this, I can't one, afford the gas, but if I could find a place to live in Kerrville, I would love to stay in Kerrville and live and work. She ended up leaving a few months ago, she couldn't do that, she couldn't find a place, uh, to live. So the hospital has needs, we're here to support the, uh, community and provide healthcare and, and when we're restricted or there's restricted access because we can't have staff to recruit, that presents a problem for the entire community, uh, from, from our perspective. So something that can give you speed to market, uh, for affordable housing, uh, something that, uh, can add another resource or completely, uh, in support of, so. That is, appreciate your creativity in trying to find something. Just because you do this doesn't mean you have to accept developers, uh, in that matter, but you've got it at your disposal, uh, at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the end of the citizen speakers.
All right, did, is there anyone else who wanted to say something that did not sign up? Okay, uh, council, are we ready for a motion? Do we have any other further comments or?
I do have a question.
Questions?
Now that we have Michael and the, uh, attorney here. Uh, Mr. Burdi did make a good point in that, uh, in, in the development agreement, is it possible to say the affordable houses are, I mean, the affordable apartments aren't tiny, they could actually be two bed or three?
Right, so I can, I can speak to that. Tonight, this would be the creation of the public facility corporation as a whole, right? To the specifics of every single one of these that would ever come across the desk, each one would be scrutinized, discussed, back and forth, uh, eighty percent, fifty percent and eighty percent, that's the minimum, right? Uh, and so if each one of those units is just the efficiency units, well, yeah, they could do that if the public facility corporation allowed it.
We have some, we have some leeway in this.
Plenty of latitude to address the sliding scales of like, you know, a, a single person, uh, two people living, well, a two-person family to a four-person family and adjusting that scale, that income, um, and addressing the rents appropriately as it comes to that.
This is the umbrella.
Yes.
In which the different.
Yes.
Projects may.
Yeah.
I wanted to ask that while we had the resources here.
Yeah.
And we've had the great benefit of, this is not a new tool, right? This is something that has been utilized in the state of Texas for over a decade now. And so there's a number of elements that have been identified in various studies that are out there that we've learned from, right? And so we know how to craft a better development agreement now than, than maybe some entities did ten years ago.
I've actually read the document that Burdi, uh, Mr. Burdi referenced, the UT document. And there are some pitfalls, so, to avoid, so.
There are, yeah.
And then I, I know we can't put words in anyone's mouth, but I think as, as council, we've discussed this on multiple occasions and I know, uh, council member Herring, uh, specifically, and, and I agreed, um, wanna be cognizant of the other, uh, taxing authorities. And I know that, um, for public information that, that the, the, that those conversations have been had and and are ongoing to put other, uh, citizens' minds at rest. It's not a secret, it's not being snuck in and, and consensus and buy-in and conversations have been part of the thought process. Um, I don't think I would be comfortable moving forward if I didn't have a level of comfort in what I, you know, have been told from, from the, uh, uh, from the schools and, and their feelings on, on the subject as well.
We do, this page's really come together, right? Uh, Mr. Barnett mentioned earlier, uh, housing, uh, task force, essentially, uh, that came out of the mayor's task force from a number of years ago, uh, Mayor Blackburn, uh, and that, uh, chamber housing task force has a number of representatives that sit on there, both from the development community, uh, as well as the school district, as well as the county, as well as our business community. And so, um, we've really looked at collaborative solutions, uh, to, to be able to move things forward. Uh, again, this was one of those elements that was identified in the workforce, uh, housing, uh, study that the city commissioned. So it's on your agenda to.
Yeah, and, and we also have the, we also have the video on our YouTube where Summer, I believe, you were presenting to us. And so if anyone in the public hasn't heard about this before now, it's available in full detail when we really, really dug into it for the first time publicly, um.
I just wanna address one of the other comments that came up earlier, property taxes aren't the only way that we support the services of this community. Uh, one of the other really important things to remember, we do have jobs that are being unfulfilled. And unfortunately, those ones that are being filled, a lot of, uh, as was referenced earlier, those folks are then driving out of this community and they're spending sales tax dollars, uh, at other grocery stores and other adjacent communities. And so this community is paying for those jobs, but then not really being able to reap the benefits necessarily of those good-paying jobs that we're producing. So there are other, uh, methods that we are able to afford the services, uh, sales tax is one of them. Uh, the other, uh, for the school district, uh, it's not just property taxes, uh, it's the weighted average daily attendance that a student provides, uh, and that gets provided from the state by having that student as part of the school district. And that's actually a big part of their income, particularly as the school district begins to move towards, uh, an actual tax return where they're having to send property taxes to the state of Texas.
Yeah.
I would just like to follow up with that cuz I also read that report, um, done by the university as well as one other by a different university. Um, they had similar points in them. So just going back a little bit, what conversations have we had with the other taxing entities, county, um, school board? Have they given their approval?
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't have it on their agenda, right? It's, it's, would be inappropriate for us to, to go put approval mechanism like that. But there are, uh, topics of conversation we've had, uh, again, within those housing, uh, uh, task force that we've, uh, uh, had numerous conversations on a number of different tools on, so. Um, but ultimately, it, this rests with the council and the council's decision to move forward, uh, with this mechanism or not.
I also wanna be presumptive about this and say to the, to the commissioners or to the school district, here's this thing that you all haven't even deigned as a, something that you wanted to do yet, put this on your agenda and vote. And what, what would you think about it? So that was part of our, part of that discussion too.
Right, well, and one of the things for me though is I consider is, we're, if we create this entity and then we move forward with certain developments, we're taking, we are taking away their, that, the tax that they're gonna be receiving.
Yeah, it's, it's not taking it away because it's, it, it's development that isn't there right now. So it's, it's a hundred percent of zero.
Well, but they're, they're getting, they're receiving something from it, it's not zero. I mean, they are getting something.
Negative right now on a vacant piece of property.
Right, but it's something and it's something that if we didn't have this mechanism in place, if a development were to occur there, they could be getting something, getting more, receiving more taxes than they would actually if, when we took it away with this entity.
Yeah, and council wouldn't need to evaluate that project by project as each one of those comes before you.
Right, I understand, and so that's one of my concerns. I have a question about a page on the document. Page five, it lists the incorporators. Is there an explanation, just curious as to why only three of the five?
Oh, I did have that question too.
Were listed as incorporators.
Reason is, men can't be trusted.
I did have that question.
Okay, so for the, for the sake of expediency and we're all been working, state law requires that, that you have at least three. And so there's the three most senior members.
They were elected before.
And that's it. Now, if you look prior to in the board of directors, everyone in the council is there. You just won't list all as incorporators unless you elected.
Okay, that's fine, okay. I'll just, I'll just, and thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
I was just really curious about that. I just wanted, I'll finish off by saying I do have some hesitations with the, um, I did look at also the statute, um, chapters three oh three of the local government code. It lacks certain renting, um, restrictions, annual reporting, annual audits, uh, doesn't require adjustments in households, household size and other reporting requirements. I do support certain methods to provide affordable and sustainable housing for our community cuz it's greatly needed. I just have hesitations that this probably isn't the way to go about it. My last, that's, so that's, my hesitations are reservations on this. What I would ask staff is, is there any way that we could take what we have right now, our documents, and insert into our bylaws some of those regulations and some of those things that we are going to be, that we feel like is needed, and just put it into our document on the outset?
I think we would recommend flexibility right now and the ability to, um, keep this as a very broad umbrella mechanism, uh, and then certainly look at those items which we've seen as best practices, uh, again, on a project by project basis.
By case basis.
And if I can add, there's also the possibility of adopting a policy. Once the PFC has been created, you could adopt a policy that says, here are the, the guardrails that we want for developers coming forward, that would also be a possibility.
So not in your bylaws, but same as we've been talking about with the other ones, a policy that's kinda outlines all that.
Gives staff and the development community clear direction on which projects are appropriate and which aren't.
And this is just a first step and an umbrella without all of those particulars in it.
That's correct.
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay? Roman, okay? You good with questions?
Yes, I'm good with questions, I just think this particular should be in this one, but I understand your recommendation, I appreciate your explanation.
And, and if I, I could add just one.
Sure, please.
One item on that, in leaving, in leaving flexibility in this tool, as your needs as a community change, as you grow, and you may decide going forward that you needed to, need something different, you want different, you want deeper affordability or you want less affordability, whatever the case may be, whatever you're wanting to incentivize in your community, amending your articles of incorporation in your bylaws is a difficult process through the secretary of state. Um, I've just gone through that. I've just gone through that with some of our other PFCs, so it can be fairly costly and difficult and can take a very long time. Whereas if you have an internal policy, you're not having to get that approved by the Secretary of State.
Can you explain the cost analysis on that? Of what are we looking at? I didn't, I wasn't aware it was very costly to do that.
That it would just take a lot of time and resources through the city, through your staff.
Staff time and resources that way.
Right, and absolutely going back and forth with the Secretary of State because there's many requirements when you amend them that are not always very clear, and there can be a lot of back and forth. And then you're obviously having to refile, and there are filing fees that would be associated with that that you wouldn't have otherwise.
Gotcha. Okay.
If it's just an internal document that is more easily amended, it's more flexible.
Take care of those things in another way.
Absolutely.
You ready for motion, Mayor?
All right, Brenda, you're okay. Kim, all right, who would like to make a motion?
I'd move that we adopt resolution number sixty-six dash twenty twenty-two, rising approving the creation of the Kerrville Public Facility Corporation.
Second.
Second from Brenda. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? We have one. And it passes. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Although the, the guys don't get to sign anything. We don't get the guys to sign.
All right, six B.
Special district policies as your public district districts and municipal utility districts. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you again for taking the time. As you all might recall, we had a discussion workshop last Tuesday about these two special district policies. And subsequent to that discussion, we made some changes to the policies and sent those back out to y'all. Biggest change, I believe, would be the modifications to the rates at which in-city municipal utility district could, how high their rates could be in addition to how high the rates for extraterritorial just jurisdictional mud could be. And those were equal to for the in-city mud of the city's tax rate and double that of the city's tax rate in an extraterritorial jurisdictional mud. Sorry. That's a mouthful. We did not have changes to the PID policy as was presented. And so with that, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it over to questions, concerns, amendments, which y'all have.
All right. And I thank you for your revision.
Yes, ma'am.
That you did, that you were asked to do. It looks, it's very good with the explanations and all of it. Yes, that was good. So counsel, questions? Anything that we've not talked about already? We've discussed this a lot.
Did we not have a recommendation regarding the format and the layout of the, one of them was it the mud policy? And how we distinguished those inside and outside the city limits? I don't, I, I feel like some of the recommendations or pretty much recommendations that councils had a, you know, a consensus on at our workshop aren't reflected in these documents. So I have a hesitation in adopting them as presented.
So we didn't, I didn't modify the structure to match that of the PID. I didn't, didn't do, we didn't, weren't able to get that done. There were too many moving pieces in there. I didn't want that to come back and that to be that confusing for everybody, especially given that was last week. From the standpoint of the ETJ conversations, I think we tried to clear up as much of that as we could without separating those two entirely in terms of here's, here's what you're going to do inside the city. Here's what you're going to do in the ETJ. So I didn't get to that. I didn't, it didn't make it that far. But I think it's still clear. I think it still talks through everything that we discussed. But that's counsel's purview.
Thank you. And one final question. Is it not custom standard for us to adopt policies in the form of a resolution? And I know that's what we talked about, whether we were going to do it in ordinance or a resolution. Ordinance establishes as law and resolution is what we usually consider as policies. I know that's what we usually do with policies, especially when we look at our water and wastewater, you know, rates and all that kind of stuff. And so I was just curious if there was a reason why this isn't in the form of a resolution.
There's no legal requirement for that. And it's, it's, I mean, while that's been our general, it's not a policy of council while we've generally done it that way. Just didn't do it this time. There were, there were two kind of going simultaneously and so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
May I? Sorry, I interrupted.
Go ahead.
My memory serves, it was, it was councilperson Clarkson who had some concerns about the format of the mud document. I wonder if she feels comfortable with it as presented.
Well, I, I, I mentioned in, in, in my comments that they were specific to me. So I would like to defer to the rest of counsel that, you know, my way of organization may not be everybody's way of organization. If counsel as a body feels like we want to go forward with that request, I'm fine with that. If after reading the policy, a majority of you all feel fine with the way that it's written, I will be fine with that as well.
Michael, you said it was just because it was last week, and yet here we are. I think several of us asked for that to be redone, including councilman, our councilperson Clarkson, and it hasn't been. And now we're being asked to act upon it when it hasn't been reformatted.
To the extent that they're going to look exactly the same, they won't.
I, I don't, I didn't ask you to make them the same. I asked you to reflect what she requested. Do you remember what she requested?
Well, I think I'd like.
Well, we understood, yeah, we may need clarification then because what, what we understood was to extract out the ETJ items. The, the, the mud and PID policies are formatted in totally different formats because they're totally different mechanisms. And so if the direction is for those to be similar, we've got a lot of work to do. If the direction is to pull the ETJ elements out, but still keep the kind of broad categorical mud sections together, that's what we thought we heard, but we may have not heard the council correctly last week.
I don't know if this reflects what we talked about.
Okay.
I, I would appreciate revisions that we recommended and asked for in the documents respectfully.
Let me put in.
If we could clarify those.
If you're going to take our time in workshops and we give you input, and then we come to a meeting and that input has not been followed, it's detrimental, detrimental to harmony among the council.
Okay.
We, we'd love to get clarity from the council on exactly what revisions would like to be made. Perhaps, Mayor, we could pass the special district policy related to the PID and then go section by section through the mud piece. We, we have absolute clarity.
Okay. Counsel, what's your, what's your pleasure?
I think we can approve, I, I'm okay approving the PID personally.
I am as well.
Okay, Joe?
Fine.
You're fine. Roman? Approving of yeah?
We can do a vote on the PID. That's fine. And then what, a separate one on the mud? Is that what we're seeking?
Yes.
Okay, separate action.
Yes. All right. Would someone like to make a motion for the PID? So we would, it would be to create a special PID district policy? Is that how it would read?
Prove the draft of the public improvement district policy as stated.
Okay, just in public improvement policy. We need the word district in there though, don't we?
Just, I guess, I guess just read the title of what the policy is, right? To approve the public improvement district policy, the draft.
Yes, the first half of that is what we would do.
Yeah, and not the main.
Okay.
Make that motion.
Okay. And we, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And opposed? We have one opposed. Okay, for the mud.
I, I don't particularly want to go through it line by line tonight because we had a whole workshop on it already.
So if I, so I can, when, when I bring it back, because I want to, I, I certainly don't want to waste anybody's time. Just trying to mirror the PID policy as much as we can and make the mud policy kind of reflect that as kind of, as best we can, separating out the in-city portions and the ETJ portions really explicitly. So you can see, here's the stuff that's in city, here's the stuff that's in the ETJ.
I think that's what we, I think that's what we had consented on.
Yep, I agree.
I don't want to make life difficult for anyone, but I think that's what we all agree for.
No, that's not at all.
Is everyone comfortable with staff doing that and bringing it back to us?
So we're basically table that part or what are we doing?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion, Mayor. I can, we're good. To move, I move to table the municipal utility district policy until is our next regular meeting good for staff and council?
How much time do you need?
No, I think that should be sufficient.
Two weeks?
No, it should be fine.
Until our next regular meeting.
And if you need more time, take it, but please don't bring it back to us until it's ready.
Is it, if that's sufficient time, just tell us.
Yeah, no, that should be fine.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is approved. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I don't know about this next one.
All right. Do we have anyone who has any questions on this next one?
Resolution number fifty-eight dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution canceling the regular meeting of the city council scheduled for November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, and December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Any questions, anybody? Do we have a motion?
I'll just bring up what the city manager requested that I bring up with, since I wanted to. Every year, we customarily adopt a resolution to cancel our fourth Tuesday meeting in November and December. And that's because of the holidays. And I don't think we've ever altered from that practice. So because of that, I think, okay, let me back up a little bit. Our meetings are established by an ordinance, a law, and so it's in our Code of Ordinances. And my recommendation moving forward is, I'm good adopting this resolution. My recommendation is moving forward to make this process simpler, I guess, is for staff to draft a res, an ordinance, amending our existing ordinance, Code of Ordinances, to change the language that the, the meetings are automatically canceled in November and December. And I think that solves this. We don't have to do a resolution every year, so.
You want to make a motion?
And so I, I would just open that up for deliberation, and I'm happy to make a motion to, to do that afterwards.
Any other comments?
Does not agree with that for some reason.
I just don't think it's, it's necessary, I guess, in that we may have count, we may have other things we have to change over the holidays, based on holidays. I, I just don't think it's necessary to ask for a new ordinance when we can just solve it with a resolution based on what's going on, but.
You're saying it's better to have the meeting scheduled and be able to cancel it than to not have a meeting scheduled and then have to try and fit one in because we've got some sort of crisis going on.
I see you need to make a change. Joe?
Okay, I just, every year we adopt this resolution. We've never altered from it, so I just didn't see a reason. But if that.
Let me just say something. Since I've been here and Steph knows this, I'm always opposed to canceling the meeting in November. And they get mad at me. And I'm just opposed to it because we used to have this great meeting and, and, and council would provide turkey and it was great. And so.
Now we know why.
But it's, it's really been a fifty-fifty deal. And I'll say this, because our charter requires certain actions to occur at regular meetings, I would keep the, those meetings on the books just in case.
I got you. Okay, I appreciate that.
Don't think we need to change that.
That's fine.
All right, do we have a motion?
I will move to approve resolution number fifty-eight dash twenty twenty-two.
Second?
Second.
Joe, thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Sorry, you're not getting your turkey.
And it passes. All right. Is there anything for the good of the cause? Are there any things that need to be put on a future agenda?
We do have a citizen speaker for seven A, and we had a citizen sign up to speak on nine, but I can send you information on that.
Did that person leave?
I'm here.
Oh, okay.
And I'm from Houston, so I don't mind sending information, but I would rather speak if you don't mind.
That's.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said.
Under nine for the council, I can send you the information that he has, or you can let him speak. That's up to y'all.
I've, I've waited so I could.
He's here?
Okay. I, I still didn't quite hear you. He wants to speak. All right. You may speak.
Go for it.
Look at that. All right. Well, I have, I have handouts. I'll try to be brief. I will say to Councilman.
You'll need to, um, state your name.
My name is Jess Fields, and my address is forty fifty-seven Raleigh Fuzzel Road, Spring, Texas, seven seven three eight six. I was elected when I was twenty-two in College Station, and so I have to say you quite outdid me. And I, 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 that's amazing.
Congratulations.
I asked the PIO, I was like, how old is that guy? So anyway, aside. So I, I want to address something actually that was talked about earlier, and I think it's appropriate. It was mentioned that school teachers can't afford to live in Kerrville, and that's definitely an unfortunate situation. But I have a solution. The solution is that you give teachers the ability to make more money. Teachers are paid on average fifty-five thousand dollars in Texas out of about three to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year spent in the classroom. The majority of that, of course, is not actually spent on the educational product, the teachers themselves, the direct materials. It's spent on things like facilities, INS. And it's spent on a lot of other things that have nothing to do with the experience the kids have in the classroom. So how do we fix that? Well, there is a, a way to do it empirically that makes sense. And that is allowing parents to take their children out of a failing public school, which I am not accusing Kerrville schools of being, by the way, but there are certainly, where I'm from, Denver and Houston, there are quite a few. In San Antonio, there's quite a few, and other parts of our state. Take them out of a school like that and send them to a school of their choice where their children learn better. Now, if you have special needs children, during the pandemic, your children fell behind several years at least, a lot of them. The legislature passed in twenty twenty-one a pretty explicit school choice program with the special supplementary education services grant, fifteen hundred dollars for every special needs child that applies for it, which you have to know about it, to use for different services, counseling, therapy, things like that. But it's not hardly enough. You have to give children the actual ability to go to a school where they can learn best. And again, studies bear this out. It's actually best for the kids to stay in public school. Thirty-one out of thirty-three studies show that a school choice program improves the public schools. Doesn't improve necessarily all of the private schools that are out there. And folks who choose to homeschool can pull out of the system entirely if they want to. But you want to give people the ability to choose. Actually, in January, and this is why I put it on number nine, because the county did already act on this. In January, the county Commissioners Court passed a resolution in favor of school choice. And one of the Commissioners said, quote, in the minutes, I think we're all in favor of school choice, especially here in Kerr County, and it passed unanimously. Hey, that's great. That was kind of a big deal. We all said to ourselves, hey, that's pretty neat that Kerr County would pass that, you know? Because supposedly rural Texas is against this. But we would say that actually, as we've gone around the state and talked to folks about this and educated people on this issue, really, the only folks that are against it are the folks that stand to benefit from keeping things exactly the way they are. You know, with over a hundred billion dollars in debt in our school districts, with over countless districts that have been taken over by the state, that have failed these kids, especially in the last few years, with a lot of parents who frankly don't have the ability, either financially or flexibly wi, uh, flexibility wise, to take their children and either homeschool or put them in private schools. It becomes clear that there is a need for a better solution. And by the way, six of seven studies show that teachers do get paid more with a school choice program. Thirty-one states already have it. And in May, Governor Abbott came out and said, money should follow the child. And that's exactly what our organization, Liberty for the Kids, is supporting. And we're simply encouraging folks to talk with their legislators, talk with their communities, with the civic organizations. We've been speaking to rotaries and chambers and things like that because this is an issue for all Texans. Even rural communities that don't directly benefit from it, as former State Rep Warren Chisholm told me the other day, and we have a video of him speaking on this. But he said, even folks in rural communities that won't benefit shouldn't fear because the folks who are in bad situations in urban school districts that are failing, where their kids can't learn as well as they would like, they should be able to have that choice. If you have any questions, I'm here. Otherwise, I'll hang around afterward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Shelley, did you have something on seven A, someone who signed up to speak?
Someone signed up to speak on seven A, yes. George Brudy? No, he, he's declining.
All right. Thank you, thank you. All right. Anything else, counsel, before we adjourn the meeting? All right, anything else, council, before we adjourn the meeting?
May I clarify, sir, are you requesting that we add something to our agenda?
Yes, I'm requesting that you guys pass a resolution in favor of school choice as the county does, I'm happy to furnish such a resolution in six seconds.
Okay, you have a, you have a template?
I can send one to the Secretary tomorrow. I don't, I don't have it right offhand, but I, I'll, I'll pull what they pass and be something.
Sure, I'm happy to sponsor that item.
Is there a second for that item?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? All right, at eight thirty-one, we are adjourned. Thank you.